Six seventeen. Six seventeen. March four year, twenty twenty three, at the town hall and there. Okay, do adopt the agenda, please?
Can I make an amendment to that?
You can.
Bill current wanted to add opening the bids for the steam bank stabilization at thirty in Blue Brook Road.
Okay, we'll leave that under the highway. Okay, we'll put it there under web paving. Goods. Okay, so I want to make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition. Certainly. Second. Rich seconded. Any discussion? Not all favor say aye. And I vote. Present the minutes of February twenty second. Are there any additions or corrections that don't commit as presented? If there are none, please somebody make a motion to check the minutes on February twenty second, twenty three. Second.
Yes.
Second. If there's any discussion, all groups, all group say aye. Aye. Vote. Okay, so now we're back to the pickup here and I guess the consent here is that we put stop sign back. We put the stop signs, warning stop signs there. And call for traffic study and amend the ordinance. Is that okay?
Are we putting the yield back? On the Brooklyn side?
We're here. Yeah, I think we'll go back, let's go back to the original. Before it was changed again.
So I guess my only, just long clear, so you're now going to remove the sign from the bridge.
Right, definitely. If that's okay, somebody, also somebody.
And then what's gonna happen? Well, then also, are we gonna have the in turn, are we, are we gonna be the engineering committee?
Yes. Yes. And we're gonna call the sheriff to spend the two hours per week for thirty days at that intersection. Somebody wanna make that one? Oh, I'll just, I'll make it. John made second, second, second. Any other discussion from anybody? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Yep. I vote. I think should be moved from the bridge, but it's gonna confuse that.
Okay, so it's three. The set of the ordinance, I don't have that stuff there.
Yes, you do, it's the third page in your. It's just the list of the ones that are overdue. If you don't.
Yeah. Well, I don't have, okay. And so everybody understands that we're supposed to up the set of the system every, what is it, every four years, okay? So there's the list of people here who have not posted. And I shall read them, Neil Lansworth, Lansford, Francis Albert, Mike and Marie Parker. Some, past the back, James Paulston, Retro Creed, Brenda Pratt, Christopher Schem, and Osborne Scott. There's no record of these being, for any of them to be done with. And if they're not done, then the town pumps it and then you build it. So what is, what is the board's pleasure, how do you wanna handle this? They're all. Yes.
They won't help.
Yes. It's been a little, I guess I shouldn't say lax, but we've sent out a million letters, right? And most of the people who, the list was far longer. And they have consented, but there's, we need to do something.
This, so everybody knows, I've worked this list for, well, if our system were to not be a year and a half. I've worked that list. And mailed everybody a letter. I wrote emails to those that I knew their email. I made phone calls, I got promises that they were gonna do it, several people on that list. They have had all the warning and word. And, and why they haven't done it, I do.
And I made you say that Morgan has also sent out letters as well.
Yeah.
Follow us, so there's been, after the notice, we'll do my recommendation to send them a final notice. Saying if you don't pump it by a certain date, the town will pump it and build you.
Hey, that's, that's fine, that's fine, but shouldn't be a little more than that? Maybe five of that story?
There is, I'm looking at the ordinance right now, there's supposed to be a penalty of twenty-five hours for each of them.
There should be, I mean. I mean, once again, I mean, you know, you know, rules and regulations, there's no teeth behind it, and then what, how about it? There should be something where you can count the things.
There it is, you wanna change that, you change that later.
Well, I think you waste your time, just, so I think maybe one of that, and we'll get stuck with the bill.
No, 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 we build that.
Right.
Or the no job, then you take it off their back, right? Okay?
They get one.
Is that legal?
Yeah.
Then it's probably having a lead run property.
Is that what happens when they get three, so, yeah.
We have some, I know we have some. Okay. Maybe a bonus, nothing but twenty-five dollars for each effect.
Well, maybe add another zero to that and.
Each day that a violation is contained, you shall constitute a separate effect, it's twenty-five dollars per day. Oh, per day.
All of them.
All of them.
But that's big deal.
I want everybody to dance and.
I was gonna say, you should find like the per day twenty-five dollar fee and give them a date, and then that will be the start.
There.
When the next one.
I think we have, we have a little issue though, that it's still on the ground, so it might be a little hard to pump the set of the system, so I think we should give them, you know, something like fifty, something in the eight. You know, as long as it's done. And, you know, give it to like, maybe maybe fifteen or and do that, if that's okay, somebody make a motion to that, then.
I'll move.
Okay. Alright, so I guess what we wanna do is send them a final notice that they have to have it done by, let's say, if it takes maybe fifteen, whatever it is, maybe. And if it's not done by that day, it's a twenty-five dollars per day fine.
And you're gonna pump it.
Yeah, and we're gonna pump it, well, I don't know.
That they need to be told, and you're gonna pump.
Yeah, but can we go on that property later? Yeah, that's a, oh, okay, alright, alright, and then we're gonna pump it, there we go.
And then we'll have to wait for it. I'll call him back. It would be a little bit more, just because.
I say, well, it's the twenty-eightth month, I mean, we're talking maybe the eighth.
No, I'm just, but the time around is not for the moment. Yeah, I said, do this. If you think that's enough, I'm not.
I don't think it's a problem.
They're gonna, so.
They're probably screaming us. Yeah, I mean, it's not that they have the note by. So.
What, what chance? Yeah, I mean, how do you do it? It's giving you the right.
Alright, so somebody wanna, is that made the motion, second? No. John seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Vote. Okay, most in the car, alright. Open the bids. We have this?
Yeah.
Clerk, you're the clerk, okay. The bid for mowing the parks and the cemetery.
The estimate, Grapple and Parks Lawn Mowing, how much do we need to read?
Isn't that right?
Yeah. This one is, okay, there, there. Sorry, this one for the Grapple Parks Lawn Mowing, Mr. Park Lawn Mowing, trimming around trees, small plants, located on park routes. The parks is pretty cool. Tom Green Village Park, Golden Park, Brandy Park, the work will be done from April first to November first of twenty-three. Services will be done on a needed basis, not less than monthly. And all of the parks also include spring and fall cleanups in all parks, monthly park lawnmower, April first through November first. The bid is five thousand dollars, and this is typically a liability, this is all for that.
Okay?
And that's from Igor Stevens Brown Maintenance. Alberta Landscape and Construction out of London there. This one is, he spells without.
What is it for?
Grass cutting is for, let me read it one more second. This is for the cemetery, is also, okay, spring cleanup. Services include power sweeping, ground with debris removals, seeding where necessary. Price that's a hundred fifty-nine, so apparently we're gonna get charged more if they seed. Same thing with the fall, he breaks it down, grass cutting, Middleton, Burgess, Middleton Cemetery, Cudall Road, West Paul, Randy Road. And south is thirteen thousand forty dollars.
That's it for the year?
Uh, that is for the year, like I said, looks like there's additional charges if there's seeding.
And that is for the cemetery, because you're.
Yeah.
That was for the parks, okay, so that was it for the parks, sorry. Okay.
And what is the name, what company are we?
Alberta, A, L V E R T I, out of London there. Yes, you are correct.
Is that stated? I don't know. Uh, actually, who policy did we?
Twenty foot sixteen, so I guess you mean fifteen pounds a year. I would assume that, that's what's spelled out great, but every time it comes out like Middleton. Hundred twenty-five dollars.
Fifteen thousand would be wide. I'm trying to figure.
I'd rather leave.
They go through. Four months, four months? Four, four months? No, it's not enough. The.
It's quite a month if you break it down for the eight months.
Yeah, it should be a day or, they, a lot of that's. The bid statement, how long?
There's at least one a month. Yeah, I think I said once a month. That's the requirement is once a month, or as needed.
I think I said either, so that goes like thirteen months. Once a month. That's a little vague.
Alright.
Well, let's see what the, maybe it's not a very. This one. Igor Stevens Brown Maintenance also, Grapple Cemetery Lawn Mowing, I expect for cemetery lawn mowing, trimming headstones. Mowing the trees, small plants and bushes located in cemetery, cemeteries of Billy, Burdys, Middleton. Both built in Southbrook. The work will be done from April first to November first of twenty-three, service will be done on an as needed basis, not less than monthly. In all cemeteries, local spring and fall cleanups in all cemeteries. Uh, the state again, monthly cemetery lawn mowing, April first to November twenty-first, twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. And this, we're gonna get a liability challenge also.
We're here with liability with the end back?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah. We need double check. Yeah.
That include, and I was looking around the stone too? Yes.
Yes. Uh, estimate for cemetery lawn mowing and trimming headstone, monuments, trees, small plants, courts located in cemeteries.
And the specs can set out the bid, was there a time frame in that, was that?
Well, you just read is what the specs were.
I thought we were talking, I was gonna up here. I'm off here.
I'm not sure either.
But this isn't anything you award to make anything, is it? You look over the.
Yeah, no, we have to look over the page. But the credit, you can award the, that's part.
Yeah, he was there.
But the other two, you wouldn't want to, to understand better what the situation is. But, but we can, we can award the parts that's in the one bid. I don't know, they make.
I've never heard of it, that doesn't mean.
You don't have. Well, there's a board one, one day down to the parks and it's its own. That would, if you cover the time frame, or the. No, that if you were more, no, I know.
No, we need more, we're gonna consider.
But I'm worried about the, the parks. Alright, so maybe somebody wanna make a motion that we accept the bid for five thousand dollars to do the, the work part, so make a motion. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Vote? Okay. Alright, so we'll have to, we'll have to, we'll take a look at that and put it on the agenda for the next time. Okay, we have to approve length?
Local emergency manager.
What?
The local emergency manager.
Everybody had a chance to look at it, or whatever. If there are any questions, Bill, that we should know about it, or whatever.
So this is the annual local emergency management plan.
Yeah.
Not to be confused with the hazard mitigation plan, which is there every six years. This is the money was done annually.
Sure.
The emergency management committee, like the over, updated the names and addresses, added a second deputy emergency manager director in person, Bob Morgan. And changed a few other things because of the change in offices in the, in the term. Other than that, it's the same as, as far as the act of the management plan goes, it's the same as it, it has been for the last three or four years. It's quite a while now.
Since, since everybody's thinking, look at it, somebody wanna make a motion to accept it?
Make a motion. I'd like to have an emotion, say you adopted as the local emergency management plan for Grapple and for the, it's coming in.
Okay. So if you don't, if someone, someone, somebody, we have a second? Sorry? Okay. Any other discussion? If not?
Yeah, I had a question. I wonder if we're doing this ahead of schedule because we have not appointed the positions of the director, public emergency manager, manager, or any of those positions yet, so they have wrong names.
I'd be happy if you waited to the end of the meeting to approve this, you have to do the appointment.
That's fine.
But I'd like to have it done now, so that we have it in and we can forget about it, we don't have to worry about it.
Alright, so let's, let's put this off until we get the amendments. Now we go from there, is that okay, everybody?
Sure.
Mike, you're, did we put this thing on there on the contractors? Because we've had that three years ago, when we had the COVID problems, you know. So that's, is that something we should re- renew again in the event that we have a severe storm or a hill, or a truck rolled down or whatever?
It's basically not, nothing more than a list, correct?
It's a list, and, and what it was there was that it was the, the three, there were three companies that were P and L, Stevens and Bradley, and I'm not sure, Lawrence was on there or not, and then there was an hourly rate. And then there was a, they could either use our truck. Uh, if one of them employee was sick or whatever, I believe, I don't know the exact details, I think that, and that's, that's what was.
Now, we probably gotta take a look at it.
Well, yeah, I think so, sure, but I'm saying is, I think that we need to look at that, in the event that we have an issue. Yeah. Thank you. And Morgan, you can find that.
Yeah, I found the contract that we had.
It is the contract.
So I wanted to distribute it to the board, so we'll put that on the next meeting.
Well, I don't know a lot of buildings, because.
They all had, they all had high building parents and leaving out, so it was a, was done very well. Maybe you were on board that, in my book.
I don't remember.
It was three years ago.
Yeah, this is not.
James, James, somebody wanna address it?
Uh, so James and James is charging their latest invoice with three dollars and ninety-nine cents per gallon for on-road diesel. And Bar Energy quoted us three dollars and eleven cents per gallon. Uh, this was kind of brought to our attention because James and James does not do an automatic delivery for fuel as Bar Energy does. So they would be a weekly delivery. Um, we wouldn't have to contact them. They would just automatically show up.
I want to say it's, well, like, run out for.
Yeah, really an inconvenience, because we'd have to call them and tell them what level our tank was at, which is not very convenient, and then they'd kind of guess at how much they were gonna bring us. And then they might bring it to us.
Something of a simple solution.
Yeah.
So, somebody wanna make a motion?
So your recommendation is, please.
Down and down, so it doesn't really take a lot to empty a thousand downs out, if you've got a snowstorm or something going. And the fire department feeds out of the same tank, so when you run out, it's kind of protocol.
Well, they put you on, on the man, then wanted, they had to, they'll computerize, so they don't want to come.
It would, yeah, they just came once a week and they deliver to other businesses locally here, so it may be more convenient for them as well.
We're working better, saving the money, it's all going away.
Somebody make a motion? Just second. Okay, Kathy, second, and checking Rich.
Yep.
All favors they are?
Yeah.
Vote? Okay, that's an easy one. Um, have any extent weight permits, we'll have to read them all here, but.
I don't think so, but I read two more today from Ernie Brothers Construction and Deacon Sales.
Okay. So this is kind of a simple, just make a motion to accept it. And then Morgan can sign it up and, well, it's a good point. Always happens in time of year. And because that, it's a, it can commit that they can run over a high lease, they're gonna get paid ten bucks, I think, is what it is. Someone make a motion that we accept, we accept it, it's presented.
Yeah, so.
Second? One second. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all favor, say aye.
Good.
Vote? Okay, good. Okay, I put, I put the payment tactics on, Mike, only for the simple reason that before we know it's gonna be May. And this gotta go out in other companies, so I don't think we should discuss it today, but I think you the highway committee or whoever, figure out what you wanna do, what kind of recommendations you wanna do, so we can decide.
Okay.
Alright, because before you know it's gonna be May.
Ah, yeah. Now, we should, this, by the end of the month, be talking to a few people.
Yeah.
To think this could fall wrong.
And Mike, have you heard about that? About that? Okay, now we have.
Do we want to look at that bid further?
Yeah. Richard, busy man there.
Yeah, I don't have a good reason to, yeah. This is for E W P project. They stream back stabilization is up there.
Yeah, that's the one that, that I can add in there and. Patrick?
Uh, Igor Stevens Brown Maintenance, prepared remaining hundred fifty feet of solar cleaning wall from the old project, fifty thirty-nine dash zero one one. For the drainage channel from the pond road, this section will be widened to twelve feet, so the cleaning bed and the drainage channel outlet will be redirected to the lower impact to Hickory Park. Uh. Okay, so the first estimate for that, as I just described, is forty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Say again, please?
Uh, forty thousand nine hundred and forty, four zero, nine five zero. Uh, the second part of this estimate is also same company, Igor Stevens Brown Maintenance, prepared a fifty-five feet of damaged stone retaining wall per E W P project fifty thirty-nine dash zero one one, and that's twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars.
Does anybody know how this gets paid?
That was kind of my question.
Does anybody know how it's paid?
I did, I did hear a question.
How's, how's the, how's the twenty thousand and the twenty-eight thousand dollars in pay?
Uh, we have, uh, we have from the National Resort Conservation Service, we have the grant for what apparently is the forty thousand dollars, that's a quick part of this, from the, from the, as I understand it, from what you read. We have a grant for, their estimate of cost of doing that was was twelve thousand dollars. And, and we had, our, our share of that would have been nine thousand, and they would pay two thousand.
This is the twenty-eight thousand one?
This is not, it's the forty thousand.
That's the one of both of us?
This is the one from the, from the covert back, as I understand it. But I needed to, I'll need to look at it and see, if, if you, if you're talking to fifty-five feet, it may be the twenty-eight thousand. In any case.
Fifty-five feet is.
Yeah.
And where is it from? Beginning where?
This is the. Yes, yeah.
Prepare fifty-five feet of damage, retaining wall.
I'd like to know why the town's working on private property.
We're not working on private property. This is, this is, the N C R F is working on private property. And we have, if we want the grant, we have to match the grant, but the grant, but it can be paid for by the homeowner at times. But whether they want to do it, and that would, why, that would be part of the discussion, but you went through. Okay, this is, okay, so the forty thousand nine fifty is the remaining check. We have a, a grant for twelve thousand for that fifty-five feet. However, uh, that twelve thousand can be raised after, within the discussion through the N C R, N R C S. And so I, I need to get back to Mike La Pointe, telling we do have a grant on, we do have a bid on it, and this is what the bid is.
Okay, so we're not gonna, we can't deal with this tonight.
No, but I'm gonna open up the discussion for the rest of it. In nineteen ninety-six, through the engineering company, and I won't take a whole lot of time with it, and I just, when everybody think about this, that we do have a discussion on. That is, it's the same, uh, tie-in bond, designed a system that ran, instead of having water go past uh, Mike's and Patrick's house, in a culvert that was there, and making that culvert bigger, they ran all that water that used to come down fire corn and go by the church and into the river, through the backyard, the inside yard, the Dottie Cannon, and back. The town agreed to that. The town has some liability here. They're sending all this water because the design, they expected down a channel that was never meant to handle it. And it's built in such a way that it is destroying, every time the water comes down that channel, it is destroying uh, Dottie's wall, because instead of going gently into it, well, roughly, but at a making water go with the flow, it goes across the flow. And just blows up. And what it's destroying is that portion of that of the wall, that's why that, of course, the wall is worn down. But what N R C S will cover is where, where damage is gonna take somebody's house. And they're only gonna cover the fifty-five feet up from the covert to where it is eating into the bay, where Patrick used to have his steps down. That's only part they're gonna cover. I think somebody needs to. I think somebody needs to pay for the whole damn thing. But that's just my opinion, because I think the town really screwed up. At the very least, they should do whatever they can for the portion that NRCS will help there in an amount that will cover whatever NRCS wants. And I'll get back to them and get back to you with that amount. But we can have a discussion about this, but I think that the town really messed up in ninety-six when they did that, that, uh, project. So that's.
So some of those were actually flowing, uh, over the road into the, um, church parking area? Going down into this, into their, um, basement?
No.
So there is.
No, no, it's coming from the village park, and it's going on to the, the old, rather than the house now, that's what I mean. That's really. That's the difference.
That's the difference, that's the difference, but what comes down? But, but not only did they do, do that coming down there, but they also added more water out of the pond into Hinkley Brook, up, up the creek, uh, next to, um, uh, well, that first creek that comes, comes down before my house. That water, that water is, it's a lot more than it used to be, too, because much of that water used to come down the road, so.
Well, maybe we should go back on tie-in bond, if, if they have, like, I don't think the town is liable for it.
I don't know that anybody should be liable for it.
I agree with you.
But here's, but here's one of the things you've got to do when you look at an engineering project, and that in the future, is see that you're not tearing up the people down below. Because that's what happened here. So what I'd like to do is, is, is come back with at least this part of, of it with you, I can, because they're not, I don't, NRCS is not gonna cover this part of the forty thousand. But come back with this part and see what they will.
My question is, too, is this just another baby? Or was this the, you know? Yeah, you know, I mean, this is gonna go on forever, I mean.
Purpose of hiring an engineer is to solve the problem, not to just kick it down the ass.
People in ninety-six.
Where, where did we become aware of that? This thing has been a problem. What was, it was a problem in, uh, Irene, and, and, uh, the walls were fixed in Irene.
Also in two thousand and four, it was explicitly brought before the, the board.
I mean, exactly. I'm just wondering if it's too, too late of time on that, any type of, you know?
They most likely don't have any liability.
Yeah, like, that's so long.
Yeah. But I just wanted to, to bring that up, and, and, and what the, let me step back a second. The NRCS program is this. If you have a house that is by the creek and because of flooding, the, the walls of the creek, the strengths of the creek are being so robed that the house could fall into the river. And they make that, they make that, uh, this decision themselves, there, there, there's no appeal to that, either they say yes or no. Then, then they and, and they will ask the town where that house is, is, if they would like to apply for a grant to fix that. And in the past, when we've done that, we did it down here by the, by the, by the, by the bridge, on both sides of the bridge. And in the past, because of Irene, the state had money to pay the matching part. At this time, there isn't money to pay the matching part. The matching part, if you're gonna be, uh, if, if the project's gonna be done, matching was to be paid by the town or by the landowner. And so when, when we have those figures, I think it would be a good time to make that decision and not now. But that's the program, the program has nothing to do with working on private property, that's the N, NCRS grant, that it's meant to be worked on private property if the town that, that, that where the property is located wants to apply for.
I mean, I think this is, this is a little bit complicated for tonight, I, I think what we should do is, is look at the balance, see whether we can get additional money with the grants. Get that, and then maybe, we, but, but, um, whether there's any liability on tie-in bond or what we should do, but the fact is, we've got this. One is, one is we want Patrick's house, and we have, with Dottie Cannon fixed itself, but she couldn't get the grant because her house was, the thing, Patrick's was, so, um, there was a question.
Nothing?
Obviously, you've got to have records of preparing it three times in, in ninety-six, two, three times. I mean, that would be, because, uh, the engineering company is still well, you know, not just this last time, it's happening right now.
So I agree, but I don't know, I think it's, it's gonna take some research to, to see whether or not. There is, there is, if there is any culpable liability there, and there's the statute of limitations or whatever, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know what.
Probably this would be.
But we, we also had, where can I come wrong? Ninety-six, and we have water in it, like the remnants of water, right?
Yeah, that's.
That natural.
That, the, after that, that's when you change the water, you know, after that, well.
Yeah, after the.
They usually went down, went around on the church or something, and they ran across town.
Well, still some comes down through there, but they put some in Rob Hall's, some on, they put a lot in Rob Hall's pond to, to take the energy out of it, then they put the dissipator down by Patrick's to dump it into the river.
So, anyway, we, I, I think we need to do some research here and, and, you know, put that on the agenda, the working committee, and then maybe discuss with, um, with our attorney, we'll see whether or not there's any liability issues. Mike, what else you want to talk about highways?
Actually, the last storm we're gonna have, it's not getting involved in Florida, so. We're done.
Well, you guys put in the big boy out, there's no doubt with.
The power company was less than stellar, right, that's all I can say.
Well, I think.
I do.
Sure they were a better guy. I think we have an issue that, I think, what has, have talked about is we're very diligent of telling the power companies where the averages are, we're, but they don't tell us when they fix them, and I think that puts, that puts a burden on us, because if we have a road that we couldn't plow, and then all of a sudden it's fixed, we don't know about that, we can't go back and fix it unless somebody calls, and, and I, I think there has to be a two-way street here, somewhere, and I don't know how we do that. And maybe we need to have a future meeting with Green Mountain Power to see what can be done. Yes, sir?
We've talked to Green Mountain Power to make a blue in the face, I could go to the PUC, who has.
Okay.
Go directly to the PUC, tell them, tell them exactly what the problems, and at PUC to meet with us and Green Mountain Power, and then review it, because they aren't do, they aren't doing what they, what they.
Well, like the day of the storm, I always plowed, the trucks come in three pines. And they, and all they had to do was go cut the trees or the wires out of the road so we could take care of it. They just come into town, then left. It was weird. I, I called the, the back line at Green Mountain Power at three-thirty in the morning because the power line in Fisher Hill below Rich's was.
Ice, light chill.
Yeah, that was, it was awful, we couldn't get this side of the hill, we had to go over the backside of Fisher Hill to get anywhere. And it took them seven hours to show up to the.
Which, that's a little bit. And it also's on fire, what a hell of a life.
I looked at the shop, I thought Bella placed it on there.
Yes, that we have, um, we're now in the district, the red carpeting and everything, and that's their had it worse, had it, had it just as bad as now.
Yeah.
We had a representative, unfortunately, we only had one representative, but I would think that the, we're, I'm, I'm gonna contact you from the ground, because anyway, to see if anything is being talked about at the state level, I see we thank the line workers, they do a great job, but something, something has to be done, because this can't keep happening every single year. Um, and it's gotta be bigger than just Brad and complaining about it, it's gotta be other towns in the district.
They need to have at least one line crew in a bad storm like that stay in town and just take care of the wires that are in the road, I'm not saying fix them, but just have the wires taken out of the road so we can keep the road maintained and open. Would be my suggestion.
I got one call that, that was two, it's been a few years ago, that they thought, we're gonna follow on the, talk a little bit, uh, but the positions changed, it was a few years ago, uh. Basic explanation was, we do, uh, what we can, but where we're gonna get the most bankrupt on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so if there's a bigger population, that's what, that they can put more people up on line for, as you can tell.
It's not just that, it's, we're talking about southeastern Vermont, Javex, and southeastern Vermont is not important as far as the state is concerned, I'm telling you.
Very correct.
Yeah, that was right.
Why did they call the emergency, they have emergency to this area, when did they get anything?
Well, yeah, just as an example, it could have been a problem, but there was a line down at Dottie's house, which, which made the middle town road passable, so anybody that lived over there had to go all the way around, fine, but what happened if there was no path? Then none of us could get out, and by me.
Well, if we had, we could, right, we could, we could see them, but we couldn't get them.
I mean.
Led road.
You know, we're not, and, and Mike is absolutely right, we're not asking to fix it, but just clear the roads so they're proven going, because they can't cut trees.
Well, we can tell them.
It's my point out, too, that a very personal ring, a couple of people live out there, move. And you call to you, you tell them, they didn't move the wire, and nothing happened. They didn't, they didn't.
They got lucky, yeah, they didn't see the line burning up on your house.
Yeah. Yes, sir?
All of this stuff, and the lack of communications, they will not communicate. And, and the PUC should be involved in that, and, and I agree, and, and make it, because we should be able to talk to someone, whether it's that person who is, as they said, is assigned to this town in, in a storm like that, or whomever, who can talk to somebody in PUC and find out what's going on, like, and, and as Mike had, had said to me, they, they call and tell you they fixed something, which they haven't, but sometimes you don't know if they fixed anything or not, because they just come in town and leave. So you have no idea whether they fixed the thing, not, and when it is, the tree is, the, the wires in the tree were all, were all deactivated, they don't know it, they just leave. And so it, it's, it's the communication would make response almost impossible.
Well, I, I think William's absolutely right, I think we have, we have to go to the state representative and the public service and, and, and do something, so Morgan, that's a project that we can kind of work on, it'll all.
Well, every town has a save, you know?
I'm sure, yeah.
The other thing is Brad, we're always actually getting hard, and we have this, you know, you have the state center issue, because it's not even a lot of ever changed.
No, I don't need to go like that. And, you know. All right, then you're on.
Um, I don't have a question, I gave everybody the copy of the report, please?
Yeah.
So I didn't get any questions from anyone, so I'm assuming you don't have anything, so. Okay.
I, I don't, that, well, I was, but it was a pride, I thought they're gonna be a lot worse, but frankly, but.
They're actually, after today's AP and payroll were done, um, enough to jump, and I did make the copy, I said it's dead, so, uh, we are upon our salt, or over, I should say, over on our salt, um, which is to be expected, uh, so, well. So we're over by eleven thousand than what we're budgeting.
It's seven thousand.
True, but I'm just going by, I'm worried, I'm not sure how Mike's gonna play with the numbers later, but let me know. Um, then.
Work division.
The other items, um, are fuel, it's over by eight thousand three hundred overall, which is to be expected, because that was an unforeseen for two years ago, I have no idea we were gonna be in such a. Um, and our overtime is up by six thousand, so we had gone up to ten thousand, and we're at sixteen now. Should start leveling off, we're not much more for overtime in the next three months, hopefully, and I found a way to. Uh, and next year, which is the investors, because we did budget fifteen for overtime. So I think next year will be the better, this was kind of our, our, um, our trial.
Well, this was a hard budget, because, I mean, we did this two years ago, whoever knew that was gonna do this.
Yeah, the economy was gonna do what it's doing.
Yeah.
Right. Um, so, yeah, and if you have any further questions after looking at, or do you want more, if you want after what we just did, just, um, email me, stop in, well. Um, the other thing I have is, uh, liquor licenses.
What's that thing?
Do you have any chloride?
Do I have any chloride?
So, because we haven't spent any, so there's nine thousand dollars there.
Yeah, well, yeah, that price that I stopped going out of the site, so.
The truth, don't you have?
We have some.
So you'll be ordering more before the end of this year, how long?
Well, it depends on how dry it is. You know, we can get away with it, we, well.
I just wanted to play something in text, that years ago, Steph, we, the flipboard had approved the liquor licenses, literally approved them and signed them. The state has changed that now, maybe, then you can give your, my state, so.
So now liquor licenses are done on a portal, but I have to go in, they alert me by email that says that there is an entity that has asked for a liquor license. Then I go into the portal, now I can retrieve it. There's nothing for you to sign anymore, it's just an approval, I, a lot of the towns are going in the room, the clerk approving them, they're bringing them before the board, telling the board who's asking for their license and having it reflected in the minutes that they were approved for their license. I then, after the meeting and get the approval, go downstairs, go back on the portal, and I hit the approve button. And once I hit the approve button, they let the, the entity know that it's been approved, and a license goes directly to them, there's no longer, I don't sign them anymore, like you see posted on the wall with my signature, that doesn't happen, so. It's the way of the world, everything is electronic now. Um, thank goodness, you know, we're a small town, and so we've only got two entities really that ever asked for a license. It's MKT, and it also, even other, bigger towns, the list goes on. So for right now, what I have come through on the portal, and they have paid their portion to me, is a first-class license and a second-class license, a backup license, and an outside consumption permit by MKT. They're all typical ordinary ones they've done every year. I'd like it reflected in the minutes that you were, would approve these, and then I can send it off and say that I have your approval for MKT.
Can I make a motion? Uh, let me go through. There. John, sorry. Any other discussion?
No problem with no complaints, no problem. Same.
Well, I know.
No, I haven't gotten any requests, usually I'll get a report, if there's been a state operation or something like that, um, but I haven't gotten any.
So, all favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next meeting, I don't have the N, and they've got, I'll settle for also for the N, but, uh, I just feel like I'm gonna create a doc, and I have time to go through that. And they're releasing all the side.
Thank you, anything else?
Uh, dog licenses are due by April first, uh, let everybody know, if anybody here has a dog, that's not, it's, or a fox.
I got a question for you on that personally. My dog, he's raised, I can't get a better point, so what do you?
Uh, uh, well, we tend to make assumptions when you pretend through that you have an appointment and you're gonna come down. There is more to be that, it's the computer app, it was the API, or something.
There, there's a real problem that can, um, that's a short spot, and in some cases, uh, you can't even, if you're a new patient, you can't even get it back.
It's a problem.
So, I mean, it is a problem, I know that, because, um, bhaam bhaam, horses and, and, and whatever, and so it's, it's unfair to be protein-wise when you can't get it back.
I know that I brought it up to the G I and the whole food design plan at some point, I never seem to make it into the budgeting process in time, but I know there's towns that are doing rabies clinics, and we haven't done one in many, many years. Um, and maybe that's something we can consider doing as a rabies clinic every single year. Maybe I could get some, some for at some point, or we'll just do rabies clinic, problem is getting a vet here. We have such few that our vet decided that we used to do this for years, so there was not enough response, and it wasn't working kind. We have such few that our vet decided that we used to use for years, so there was not enough response, and it wasn't working fine.
You know, the problem too, if you get somebody, who's new, and they don't have a vet, they're really in trouble. They can't even get a vet.
You all know it's true.
Otherwise I'm not.
Uh, committee reports, personnel, anything?
I, I don't have anything, and we do, um. Quarterly reviews and stuff coming up, probably, uh. April month.
Uh, we need to have an emergency management, uh, appointment. Current, I think it's Bill Current's correct. Correct.
Uh, I, I think we've got to get Morgan more involved next, well, we have two directors, plus. I mean, she's the administrator and is here available all the time, and I don't think we need another petition. In town, if the two could work together until she could get hold of everything, I think that's what should happen, I mean, she's. Willing to do it, and I think she can do it.
But that would be my suggestion, is do a dual, dual management, have, have a lot of people, and then she can be training as it goes on, build the trainer.
That's okay, so that. Your policy doesn't, your policy then doesn't work. Mercy management policy doesn't work.
Well, can we change it?
Uh. I'd have, I'd have to look at the state law, to see if they, if they lost her to emergency management director. My thought was to make her deputy, I gave her all the work to do. That, I mean, you know, still, she learns, and then, and then she made her, to replace me. Uh, I think that's a simpler way to go, and I think it achieves the same thing.
No, they would have a deputy with, uh.
Yeah, Eric.
Eric, and he has not been. You know, involved that much in it, so I just want her more involved in it. Because in your estimation. What you said in there was that. You would like the mercy management committee. To sit down and pick out somebody to replace you.
Right.
And, so that's why I bring it up.
Well, I, I think that, but I think that's a good idea, if, if, if Bill could, if Bill continued temporarily. Let Morgan be the deputy, Bill trains her, gives her the work, and then, at that point in time, next year, she should know it all, and then, then we're set.
If that happened, because I'm not saying that that happened.
Well, Bill, can that happen?
Yeah.
That's more probably a twelve month contract. That's like a reasonable.
Yeah, I think twelve months is probably reasonable.
Now, something's gonna happen that. We'll have an opportunity to train her. I'm sure in the next year, and that has every year, something.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll get it up a bit.
We'll do. And you, yeah, but Bill's right, I mean, we might have an, an issue this summer with flooding or something like that, and then we give her an opportunity, so. Uh, let's, let's, okay, everybody, I think that if Bill's willing to sacrifice her and give her the training. Then next year, she takes it over.
Yeah.
It's a fine addition, I don't want to add an expense of a whole bunch of money, because you don't have any money in the budget to do it.
No, no, I said.
Because if you look at the budget now, you'll see it's way over.
But, but, but my work is emergency management, there isn't any pay for me unless it's a third disaster. That's I'm working on is a third disaster. I mean, I, it's a volunteer, it's a volunteer position.
This is one of the things she should be doing.
Okay, well.
Well, I, I would think, you know. So to, to be clear, you're clear, what we put in the, uh, the L D M. P was, uh, that there would be two deputies, Eric and. More. With, with, uh. Um.
The M C as a member.
As the emergency management coordinator.
Right. Well, what's the P O C three day, what does she, what does she do?
She's the E M C, she, the job of the E M C is to make sure that the E O C snippets established works, or make sure that the paperwork works, and that's what we're working on right now with, uh. Between she and, between the, uh, office here and, uh, emergency management. We're, we're going back to that paperwork, and then we're gonna train them that paperwork during the next year. And that's why I'd like her to be deputies, so that when she'd be training in that, she could take over some of the.
That works for me, if that, is that your assurance, Bill, that will happen?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess now we have to approve this.
Uh, can we just have a motion that that's gonna happen?
Yeah, put it in the minutes set.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, what should the Morgan read? That, um.
I think we need a point of emergency management, I think you're so, just that, for the next year, emergency management director would be myself, the deputy. The two deputies and the E, E M C, as her name in the L E M P.
Yeah, but, but it has to be, it's extended to that, because, um.
Well, you can add, add to that, if, and it's based on the fact that she's gonna be trained by me, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and, and so that she, so that she's able to take.
Yeah, she may be.
Because, um, as far as Eric is concerned, that was the thing, the, the thought is for her to take over your position, not Eric.
Exactly.
So the, the emphasis has to be on training Morgan.
Yeah.
And if there is a, uh, an incident that happens, whether it took a lot of, of disaster, then she's right and is thick of things, so she gets the, the arm on. Which I trained first. Thanks, so, uh, we don't have to work that, Morgan, sure.
I mean, you know, what do you talk with this, but if it's really big by our grade. Standards, she isn't gonna have time to be working in emergency management.
Well, let's, let's deal with that when it comes.
Okay, we can deal with that when it comes, but I just, I don't want it wrong, okay?
I mean, if another wire needs, I'm saying we're all gonna be doing something different, so I'm worried about that, and hopefully we don't have another incident. So have you made a motion, can I have a second, Mike?
I'll put it on.
All favors say aye? You're opposed? Okay, then I will sign this thing. Um. We have a plan of local official. We will have the list here. Everybody okay with that?
The only change that I'd like to make is. For the development of the U board, we currently have. Six members. Um. And from talking to a few people, it seems to work best with five, and having two alternates. Uh, I talked to John earlier today, and he is fine with mine as an alternate in keeping. Eric, Chris, John, Steph, and Eve as the five board.
Is four?
We are here.
Okay. So then, I'm out.
You're as an alternate?
Finally, Dave. Well, did you say John was also a two, was John a mayor?
Uh, we would, we want to change him from the board, yeah, to alternate. And then, um, inspector of lumber, I called Tracy Lake, but haven't gone. In touch with him, so that, that position is practically reserved.
But we can approve the list, uh, as, as bands, and then approve Tracy, if I had another need to hear from. I think that's okay with the board.
And then the, the select positions, we've already, there's a difference, we, we, well, we doubled that of those last year.
So is Joe on the board? Joe, huh? Uh, the, John, remember?
Yes, and, oh, I'm sorry, and Matt's one of this taking.
Can someone make a motion, the fact that we approved it, uh, without the. Three women?
Oh.
Not three women, I think that was one of them. Second, someone second, is that? Do you have any sort of dog? Rich, you want to carry that? All favors say aye? Go with. Okay. We definitely point these.
Sure.
Um, is there any other business anybody have? Yes, bro.
Would you please, uh, approve the L D M P now, please?
Yes, he signed it.
I signed it.
You didn't make a motion.
We did.
We did.
We did.
Uh, Rich moved and Seth.
Well, I didn't think you voted on it based on the fact that you didn't have all the pointiest time. I just want to make sure there was a motion, that, as long as it's in the minutes, I think there.
We are here, right? Yeah.
Did you vote on it?
Yeah, we voted to approve it.
Okay.
With the training.
We didn't want to vote for it until we. Had the right, people in there. No, 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 the, the motion was that Bill would train.
We're here watching in the meeting, you didn't want to, uh, vote on it, tonight, I don't think we'll point it.
So we voted again with the, with you, you as, you're a deputy, and you're training her, and whatever, and that is done, okay? And it's fair, yeah, so I thought. Any, um, any other business? Do we have any folks comment? Please. Go ahead.
We talking to me, John?
No, I thought I heard. I'm embarrassed, man. Did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I got a few things, uh, just one thing, I guess between Mike and Joe and that's what I'm selecting, middle town road. Obviously, you know Joe was coming down it, it's getting worse and worse, that's not the worst part. It's the other side going down to the schoolhouse, so one twenty-one. Now, today, my truck was dragging and sacked, and I had an heck of a time coming up. So I don't mic you to me with that.
I do, that's probably tomorrow's project.
Yeah, I was wanting, we could put a temporary sign up there, on the, on the village side of the road, saying it's closed. To route traffic, for local traffic only. Uh, because I believe it was, what was it, Sunday night, uh, I told you, there was somebody stuck there too.
Yeah.
Up to the action, but it wasn't probably a drunk car. And, uh, but there was nobody in it, but there was a car just stuck in the middle of the road. Yeah. And so I was wondering, if we could put some signage up, just to warn people, you know? It's, uh, anyway, no crew traffic, it's bad enough if you live there.
Oh, and have a road code sign, that's what we have. You know?
So we gotta, we gotta try to fix it tomorrow.
We're gonna, we get a few spots in town, we're gonna run and stuff around.
That's a problem.
We're not planning snow, we're gonna do it. But you're up for a walk.
Going to chuck dragon because it's snowing a lot.
But.
But.
I'm surprised, but. I think that, that beat that fast, it's been frozen last few days, so I figured, you know.
It's no worse than what's left here.
Up here away.
That could go worse than what's left here.
He needs a broken couple of order there.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I think we're sun tanning.
It's moving, some of it is drying out now, it's, this whole pot's trying to break down.
Yes, John?
I'm worried to complete this update on water and the sewers problem. Um, I know that at some point it was declared that nothing perked in terms of a, of a wage field. And your last comment was, we're back to square one.
We're still back to square one.
Where does that lead?
Uh, at least, we'd have to wait for some recommendation from the engineer, and right now, they don't have any recommendations. Um, we had a, uh, scheduled, um. Zoom meeting, uh, last, when was it last, two thirty, and they canceled it to, um. Not next week, but the week after next, so there's nothing to report, right now. Right now, there's, there's no possibility to have a sewer system in the town grid. That doesn't necessarily mean that that case, there are some alternatives that they're looking at. But so far. Uh, they haven't come up with any definite recommendations. So that's where it stands.
Let's talk about finances for a minute, and with our understanding, and at least that. Um, the engineering fee would be rolled into the overall grant for the project.
Correct.
Given that we go ahead. Given that we don't go ahead, who becomes responsible for the engineering fee?
The, the state, not us. But only, we only have to pay it back if we go forward with the project.
And if we go forward with the project.
Then it gets rolled into, it gets rolled into the price.
Okay.
And we have a four million dollar grant from the state to do the set system.
Yeah, but there can't be a set system.
Well, I understand that, but, but, I mean, we're not on the hook for that money.
Okay, good.
Watch your, watch your mouth. Any other comments?
Bill said, it wasn't a lot of good alternatives, it was something to that effect, it's not looking good.
Joe, on the, uh, bridge, proposed bridge, that's supposed to start in a couple of years, I imagine. Now, the price has gone up, what, almost a million dollars from where it started? You know, our contribution, our contribution is at what level?
Ten percent.
Okay, now, this goes up in two years to. Another million dollars, and two million dollars, we're gonna. To pay it. With our participation in this now.
Sam, the schedule right now is it goes out the bid in May. And they will start minor construction in the fall, so that the bridge will maintain. Both way of traffic during the winter, then in the spring of next year, they can start, they can, that's where it's standing.
And it goes out for bid, and the bid is higher than they anticipate, then you still pay the ten percent of what, of the higher number.
And they're anticipating seven, almost seven million.
Yeah.
Was the last anticipated amount.
And if the situation continues the way it is, God only knows what's gonna happen.
And we're gonna face it out.
Uh, we have the money in the, um. In the capital budget, obviously.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
No, and we'll have to probably get a bond issue out, but that's. That's something we can't talk about now, because we don't know the reality, so let's see what happens.
Yeah, there's about a three hundred savings.
If the project goes another four years, maybe we'll have the money. Full time. Bill?
There isn't out.
Huh?
There, there isn't out.
Yeah, don't do it.
You can tell them not to do it, and just pay the bill that you paid so far, and they'll never do anything to the bridge, and the bridge will be torn down, and that's it, yeah.
Yeah, then the bridge collapses, then we have to pay for the whole nine million dollars, seven million dollars. So we don't have an alternative, I mean, it doesn't have to be a common time.
It's probably, don't stand under it.
Any other comments?
Only what about short term rent?
Uh, Morgan, Morgan, believe it or not, believe it or not, we, we're still trying to come up with a number. Of how many air demandations have been passed, and, and even Morgan and the Slapman, I mean, the listeners, we're still working on that plan, you know? Hasn't been forgotten, but it hasn't been a priority. The, the state is also wrestle, wrestling with it, and a lot of other towns are wrestling, so it's.
They're already passing it, both of them.
Well, Chester, Chester did pass it, but then they, they, they rescinded it, as far as I know, the last thing I know.
But one another pigeons, they're alive.
Yeah, so their estimates, but it's, it's not forgot, I trust, it's, it's, it didn't work. Any other comments? It's, uh, reminder that we had a special town meeting on Monday, April third, at five thirty P M to. Deal with the fire department issue with, that they, with, in the budget. I mean, the next regular meeting will, in, take place shortly after that, on Monday, April third, at six P M, four people. What's the, what's that, what's, along the, you know, where?
Did I just say again?
No, it's, they, they didn't, they didn't, we didn't, they didn't make a, a town, uh, meeting for the, um.
They didn't, we didn't put a note in the morning that we need to be talking about.
Yeah, all of them, yeah. And then, so, um, if we don't pass the report, you know, then they have to, they don't. Alright, that is, okay, we're done, somewhere, I've got them to go, other. All favors? Aye. Post? Thanks, everybody.